Everyone, I call this meeting to order. We have today three items on the agenda. The first item is affordable housing. And we have with us the city's communication development and housing manager, Mark Santos Johnson, who I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate because he is the 2020 recipient of the Housing Development Consortium Carla Oguigwe, hopefully I say this correctly, Leadership Award. Thank you very much for joining us today and congratulations again for your award, Mark.
Thank you, Council President Perez and members of the council. Appreciate this opportunity to meet with you tonight. Regarding the Carla Oguigwe Leadership Award, I just want to say it's been a real privilege to be able to work with so many outstanding organizations here at the city over the last 20 years and together we've been able to do some great things. So I really appreciate that opportunity. I'm joined tonight by Doug Levy and also Hannah Bonmiller. Hannah has been doing a great job as our Housing Programs Manager since she started in December last year. Some of you may remember that Hannah previously was an AmeriCorps Vista volunteer with the city. So our purpose tonight is to give you an update on the SHB 1406, which is the state's sales tax credit for affordable housing. We'll also give you an update on a related bill, EHB 2797, discuss two policy choices with you, review the staff recommendations, and discuss next steps. For review purposes, SHB 1406 was enacted last year by the legislature. It has the ability to provide as much as $500 million in state investment in affordable housing over a 20-year state sales tax credit. However, the most significant thing is that it's not an increased sales tax, it's an existing sales tax. So essentially, it's transferring money to local jurisdictions instead of returning it to the state. The state's sales credit is available to cities or counties over 20 years at either one of two different levels. The base amount, we'll call it 0.0073%, and twice that amount, which is what you can access if you have a qualifying local tax. Under the SHB 1406, you need to have a qualifying local tax in place by July of 2020. To collect funds for SHB 46, you need to pass a resolution, which we did last year, and authorize an authorizing ordinance by July of this year, which we have yet to do. To have a qualifying local tax can be a number of different things. Last fall, we presented to the council the possibility of exploring a 10-year property tax levy, which is the first item that's listed there. The SHB 1406 funds have to be targeted towards people with incomes at or below 60% of area median income. The funds can be used for a variety of different affordable housing needs, including acquisition, construction, or renovation, as well as maintenance and operating costs for new housing units. In addition, for cities of 100,000 or less in population, they also have the ability to use some of the funds for rental assistance, but that obviously doesn't apply to the city of Renton since we're over 100,000. Here's the two collection rates, so you can see how that translates for the city of Renton. The base rate would provide approximately $236,000 a year based on the 2018 estimates, or over 20 years, about 4.7 million. If we had a qualifying local tax, we would have twice that amount per year, $473,000, about 9.5 million over 20 years, plus the revenue that we would get from whatever the qualifying local tax is. So for example, if we had an affordable housing levy for $30 million, we would have that $30 million plus this 9.5 to use on affordable housing. As I noted, you did pass a resolution of intent last year, and you also directed staff to further explore the potential of doing an affordable housing levy. We did some polling in November of last year, and essentially, the results came back to show that there was majority support for a potential $30 million affordable housing levy if we were able to do that in a general election, such as the November 2020 election. However, if you'll recall earlier, the current SHB 1406 fund legislation doesn't allow a qualifying local tax to be approved beyond July of this year. So the legislature last year passed, in the 2020 session earlier this year, EHB 2797, which would have extended the time for qualifying local tax to December 31st of next year. And this would have allowed us the option to potentially have a levy vote either this November, which is unlikely given the current COVID-19 impacts, but it would potentially allow the council to consider a levy next year. Unfortunately, that bill was vetoed by the governor in April due to concerns about potential fiscal impacts. So at this point in time, unless the legislature in special session revisits the deadline for a qualifying local tax, that option will expire in July. So there are two policy choices that we have to present to you tonight. The first one is should Renton adopt an ordinance to authorize the collection of the base sales tax credit? And the second one is should Renton commit to pool those base sales tax credits with SCIP, which is the South King Housing and Homeless Partners Group that the city is part of? So we'll take these one at a time. The first item, should we adopt an ordinance? We are required to adopt an ordinance to be able to collect the funds and amend the Rent Mansell Code. And as soon as we adopt the ordinance, that we can begin to collect the sales tax credit immediately. There really is no downside to adopting the ordinance as soon as possible. The only reason we hadn't adopted it before is that we were waiting to determine if we were going to be able to proceed with an affordable housing levy, and we would have had a different ordinance if that was the case. But since that is no longer an option unless the legislature makes further changes, at this point in time, staff are recommending that the council adopt an ordinance as soon as possible for the collection of these funds. The second item is more specific to what do we do with the funds? And the staff recommendation is to pool them with the other cities that are members of SCIP, and we'll go through a little more background information on that. As many of you know, Renton joined SCIP last year. This group has formally started in 2019, although it's been an effort that a number of jurisdictions have been working on for a while. And SCIP came together with nine cities in South King County. They are Auburn, Burien, Des Moines, Federal Way, Covington, Kent, Normandy Park, Renton, and Tuckwilla. In addition, King County is joining us. The primary purpose of SCIP is to work together and share resources to increase the available options for South King County residents to access affordable housing and to preserve the existing affordable housing stock. So there is an executive board that meets monthly. Bob Harrison is the city's representative on the SCIP executive board, and I'm an alternate. In November of last year, the SCIP executive board passed a resolution encouraging all SCIP cities to pool their SHB 1406 funds so that we would have a housing capital fund to be able to support projects in South King County. As noted here, when this presentation was prepared a few weeks ago, six of the nine member cities had passed pooling resolutions. However, in the last few weeks, the other two remaining cities, Covington and Tuckwilla, passed resolutions that for the year 2020 will use their SHB 1406 funds for rental assistance. If you recall, in my earlier comments, I noted that for cities 100,000 or less, that is an option for them. And due to the significant impacts from COVID-19, their jurisdictions felt that for the current year, they really needed to use those resources locally. So at this point in time, six of the eight other jurisdictions have passed pooling resolutions. Two have passed resolutions to use their funds this year, but have not addressed how to use those funds beyond this year at this time. We also provided you a handout with the two different options that we were reviewing in terms of whether to pool or not pool the funds. And this is just an image of some of those issues. But to give you a little more detail on a few of the items, again, staff recommend that we do the pooling. There are a number of reasons for that. The first is that Renton projects would have access to more money. Currently, with the six cities that have agreed to pool their funds, if Renton joined it, we would have $800,000 a year in pooled resources. If the other two cities joined us next year, we would have $1 million a year. There also is the ability to secure better leverage. By bringing our resources together and having a housing capital fund, we can try to access other private and public resources to make those funds available in South King County. In addition, and one of the most significant things, is that it would provide us with a seat at the table. Unfortunately, South King County, unlike the city of Seattle and the East Side, does not have, has not historically had, a housing organization that has been representing us in trying to access local resources, particularly King County resources, but also some of the state resources. For example, RCH, Regional Coalition for Housing, has existed on the East Side for many years, and they have been able to effectively participate in some of these local funding groups, like the King County Housing Funders. Unfortunately, since South King County doesn't have a capital fund, it isn't at the table as a housing funder, and so the other people get to decide how to spend the money, and we're not even part of the conversation. In addition, some of the other pros would be that it would be more efficient. We'd have one entity doing the primary administration instead of nine separate cities. And also, it's important to note that Renton is a recognized leader in both SCIP and among South King County in collaboratively addressing the regional affordable housing needs. We believe strongly that regional needs are best addressed collaboratively with other invested partners, and SCIP provides us the best opportunity to do that. In terms of cons, Renton projects, including the Renton Housing Authority or any other organizations that want to use these resources, would have to apply and compete with other projects to do that. And we would not have direct authority in how we spend our $236,000 each year. We essentially would be one of the members of the executive board, making decisions on how to best use these resources locally in Renton and other jurisdictions in South King County. Excuse me. If you contrast this, if you didn't pool it, we'd have more autonomy. We would be able to award $236,000 a year. We have a strong partner with the Renton Housing Authority and other partners that do have a pipeline. They would be able to use those resources to support their projects. However, we believe that they would have less money, not only by not being able to competitively access the larger pool, but also they would likely miss out on some of the leverage opportunities that SCIP will provide. We also will continue to operate as an isolated city rather than having a voice in some of the local funding, which we would get from having a capital drive. And quite frankly, if Renton chooses not to do this, since we're 1/4 of the 1 million potential dollars that could be pooled, there may be other jurisdictions that decide to back out as well. So I've had the opportunity to work on trying to organize and effect more collaborative efforts in South King County for about 10 years, and I personally believe that this is a really important opportunity. When we set up SCIP last year, we included a housing capital fund as an option, but quite frankly, we didn't know how we were going to ever fund that because if it had to come out of general funds from local cities, it's really difficult to do that. The state legislature has provided us with this opportunity to essentially to pass on dollars that do not come out of the general fund, but to allow us to pool them in a way that collectively, we can do some things that we never even envisioned a year ago as being possible. So in terms of next steps, with your concurrence tonight, we will work with the city attorney's office to prepare legislation for SHB 1406 ordinance and the material to address pooling with SCIP. We also want to track EHB 2797 and whether that comes up again in the special session. And I will point out that we do have a unique opportunity that could result in additional funds for Renton, and that is House Bill 1590. And this enables King County to councilmanically enact a 1/10th of 1% sales tax increase for affordable housing and homelessness. They need to do so by September 30th this year. But if they do so, at least 30% of the funds collected must be spent in cities with a population of over 60,000. And we anticipate that this could result in several hundred thousand dollars a year that the city of Renton could use directly, separate from the base funds that are pooled with SCIP, should the council decide to do that. Also, if we are able to have a qualifying local tax potentially next year, we would have those resources as well to spend on affordable housing. So at this point, I'd like to answer any questions you may have.
Madam President.
Thank you, Mark. And at this time, I open the floor for questions or comments or concerns, and Councilmember Prince, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. So question, is there, so you said pool or not pool? Is there the option of pooling this year and seeing how things are going with the economy and everything else, and then reevaluating next year?
Potentially. All of the other jurisdictions have made a decision to pool their resources without a particular time associated with them. But jurisdictions, the SCIP organization itself is an ongoing organization, but there is an opportunity for entities to decide whether or not they want to continue.
My issue is just where the economy is going to go and what resources cities are going to need individually, and not knowing in light of COVID-19 what resources we're going to have? I mean, I understand pooling this year and seeing how it goes and seeing how things go. I'm just wondering if that's an option as well?
I believe it is an option. The SCIP executive board has not addressed what impacts there would be if someone chose to not pool. It's quite possible that Renton projects would not have access to not only this money and possibly other money they leveraged, but that would be one of the things we can...
But we would be pooling this year. I'm saying we would, and it's not even to say that we wouldn't pool. I'm just trying to give us more options.
We are still drafting the resolution, so we could include that as an option.
Thank you.
Madam President. Thank you. So I'm going to go in this order, according to what I've seen, the people that have raised their hands. So first, Councilmember Benedetti, then Councilmember McCleary, and then Councilmember O'Hara. So Councilmember Benedetti.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you taking the time to go through this, Mark. I am wondering, you said that the six other jurisdictions might potentially consider pulling out of the pooled resources. I wonder if some of them, in light of some of the budget concerns that Councilmember Prince had spoken to, are already considering pooling? If that is something that you've heard? Because I know that I've been following this fairly closely and was aware of the other two jurisdictions having decided that they were going to go the rental assistance route. That's my first question, is there a possibility that some of these other cities will be pulling? And if you'd heard anything? And then the next question I had was, when you're talking about the possibility of us being able to compete for money, you know, potentially more than the $236,000, I'm wondering if we have shovel-ready projects that would be really great in that sort of competition? Do we have things ready to go that are able to compete for those funds? Thank you.
Let me ask you your second question first, and then we'll take the first one. So we do have shovel-ready projects. Renton Housing Authority is working on their next project, which is Sunset Gardens, and we also have Homestead Community Land Trust that's working on another potential project. Both of those would need significant other additional funding, though, to be able to supplement whatever they get here. So in terms of, I think it's best to describe these as pipeline projects. Most of the projects need multiple funding sources to be able to move forward, and so we have two projects that just started, a homestead project and a Renton Housing Authority project in the Sunset area, and they're working on those projects now. They are beginning to raise funds for their next projects that would likely start a year or two years out, depending on funding availability. In terms of your first question, obviously, all of the South King County jurisdictions are dealing with a number of financial impacts and other impacts related to COVID-19. We are looking at the work plan for SCIP and the budget and personnel decisions for the future with that in mind. I've not personally heard that any of the jurisdictions that have agreed to pool their funds to date have made any decisions to change that or to talk about changing that. However, all six of them did make resolutions that said that everyone would agree to pool. So since two of the organizations have not agreed to pool this year, the executive board and those cities will need to decide how they want to proceed, whether they want to proceed, for example, to pool the remaining resources this year and not allow projects from those cities to apply, or whether they want to make some other decisions. So the executive board will probably be addressing this later this month. It's the first time that they will be addressing directly the decisions of Covington and Tuckwilla in terms of what they chose to do this year.
Mark, this is Doug Levy. If I could just add a quick thing for Councilmember Benedetti, just as a reminder for councilmembers, these are state sales tax credit dollars that have to be spent on a specific purpose. So I think the question is a valid one, but it's wherever those dollars are spent, whether they're spent by the individual jurisdiction or in the form of pooled dollars with SCIP, they have to be spent on the particular purposes that Mark noted earlier in his presentation.
Thank you, Doug. And I, right now, see Councilmember McCleary. Please.
Yes, thank you. Mark, thanks for the presentation. I will admit, Councilmember Prince beat me to the question I was going to ask, which was, not to say that we should posture and say, you know, we reserve the right to step out if things don't go that way, but to know that we have an exit if we need it later on down the road, if we find that the partnership isn't working out maybe as perhaps as we had hoped. I think it makes sense to obviously go forward and give it that best foot, put our best foot forward, considering how big of a percentage we are. So I'll ask a different question instead, which maybe Doug may be able to help answer, which is if the legislature does revisit the qualifying tax in the special session, would we still try to be a go for 2020, knowing that that was when our polling indicated? Or would we be in 2021? Because a lot of the polling data suggested that that presidential election year was where we were going to have the best odds of success.
Councilmember McCleary, I'll take a crack at it. I know we've had some internal discussion, and while you're absolutely right, the polling showed the value of something like a November 2020. That was obviously pre-COVID-19, and I think some of our internal discussion has been that the economy is in such a wrecked state, certainly throughout the rest of this year. And if the legislature brings back this House Bill 2797 with a December 31st, 2021 deadline, it at least gives council the chance to evaluate a general election-type approach next year and see if that has any timeliness to it.
Totally agree on the impact to the economy. I would be hesitant. In some ways, I'm thankful that that decision was taken away from us, knowing what we're going with right now, to say, oh, here's a proposed tax increase.
Thank you, Councilmember McCleary, and thank you, Doug. Now, Councilmember O'Hara.
Yes, thank you very much, and congratulations, Mark. I would like to just get some clarification. When we're talking about pooling the base dollars, are we talking about the base dollars of the 0.0073? Or are we talking about the base at that point being the full 0.0146?
So I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, but the base is the 0.0073. It's what we are entitled to if you pass an ordinance without a qualifying local tax. If we had, for example, an affordable housing levy that would allow us to get the higher rate, the pooling recommendation would be that we'd only pool the base amount, that the second amount we would keep for Renton ourselves.
Thank you very much.
And so all of the other jurisdictions have agreed to essentially pool the base amounts. However, the city of Renton is the only South King County jurisdiction, along with the city of Kirkland, that was considering trying to have an affordable housing levy.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, I know that I have another two councilmember raising their hands, but right now, I just can see Councilmember McCleary, someone else before Councilmember McCleary that had another question, that had not asked questions? It's not? Okay, Councilmember McCleary.
I think I didn't know how to unraise my hand, so I didn't have another question.
Okay, Councilmember Ed Prince.
Thank you. It's actually less of a comment, and I know we're trying, less a question, more a comment. I understand the importance of regionalism, and I think for me, based on all the things I said earlier, I can't support anything unless we put an exception in there that we'll do it this year and we'll look at, evaluate it for future years. It's very important to me that we allow ourselves to have the option, and if we need those resources, that we're not tied to pool.
Thank you, Councilmember Prince. Any more questions or comments? Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, Councilmember Corman.
Yeah, I guess I'm comfortable, I'll just make this comment, but I'm comfortable with the approach that Ed Prince just outlined. I mean, where we join and we pool it, but make it clear that, especially given the economic conditions, that we, you know, we want to reserve the right to take that back.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Corman. Councilmember Benedetti?
There we go. Yes, I just want to clarify for my understanding that because we are a city of over 100,000 residents, that the rental assistance option is not available to us. And so if we were to not, if we were to pool this year and then potentially have the option to relook at the situation in 2021, it would be that we would then retain the same $236,000 potentially in 2021 to use on specifically the projects that were in Renton. And so that, our options are either pool or not pool, not what it is that we will be able to use the money for. Is that correct?
We do not have the option to use the money for rental assistance, nor does SCIP, if we pooled our resources, have the option to use our money on rental assistance. They could use pooled money on rental assistance for the cities that are less than 100,000, what they contribute, but ours would not be used for that. And to date, there has been strong support among the staff working on SCIP to try and use the resources to support capital needs as opposed to rental assistance, because those are the longer needs we're really trying to address.
Thank you, Mark. I would add my voice to Councilmember Prince and Councilmember Corman, that I would be in favor of pooling this year with the option to take a look next year and see where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Benedetti. I see that someone else is raising their hand. I see that someone else is raising their hand, but I cannot see the name. Councilmembers, if you have another question? Councilmember Ban?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just want to echo my, I think the way the conversation is, most of my colleagues would be in agreement, so I'll just echo Councilmember Prince, that the suggestion of pooling and then having the option to not pool, given our, there were ramifications, impacts, financial impacts of COVID-19. It's important for us to look at what are our projects and our priorities. I know that we work collectively with the other cities, but certainly it is, you know, we only get funding, you know, from this source or that source to do projects, so it's kind of like piecemeal. And so, yeah, keeping that option is important for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ban. So, Councilmember Corman, if you are comfortable with this, I will suggest that the ordinance and the resolution are reviewed first by the planning committee before it's on the agenda, and then you guys can discuss it on the table that has all the amendments that you guys have suggested.
Okay, I'm happy to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Is that okay, Mark?
That's great, thank you.
Okay. So if there are not more questions or comments about this topic, I just want to thank Mark again, and we will move to the second item on the agenda, which is Civic Core and Downtown Update. I am not sure who is on the other side of the staff to make this presentation, but welcome.
Good evening, Council President Perez, members of City Council. I'm Cliff Long. I'm the Economic Development Director here for the city of Renton. And I am joined by Economic Development Manager David Buheit. And tonight, we're going to walk you through a brief update on the status of the Civic Core Vision and Action Plan. I'll begin with a very brief recap of the plan, and David will speak to what's been accomplished to date, efforts that are underway, and future projects. And I'll let David get caught up here and get the presentation started.
Can you see it?
Yep, we can see it. Just need to start the presentation view.
I have, me. Are you seeing a full screen?
Yes.
Okay.
So, but it's not in presentation view, David. Can you click the little screen at the, on the bottom?
So I think the issue is actually in the Zoom settings. It's which screen you're sharing right now. You're sharing your desktop, and you want to share it specifically the app, the presentation.
Okay, let me do that, sorry.
No worries.
Stop sharing that. Share. There we go. Better?
Better.
Okay.
David, you could advance to Slide 3 if you would, please.
Yes.
So as a brief introduction, in 2017, the city undertook a year-long process to create a roadmap for the future of downtown Renton. The plan was led by a team from Community and Economic Development, Community Services, and Public Works, but it had participation from nearly every city department. Business and property owners, residents, neighbors, and citizens came together to form this document to strengthen, preserve, and enhance our downtown. The document was adopted by City Council in January of 2018. It outlines a series of initiatives from short-term, quick wins, to very long-term capital improvement projects. A key element of this plan focuses on business support and making downtown a viable location for commerce. I'm going to turn the presentation over to David at this point to walk you through these efforts.
Thanks, Cliff. Even prior to the adoption of the Civic Core Plan, the city began a program to assist building owners in enhancing their storefronts. Large projects that we assisted in include the Crotona Building, Vigor Ground Fitness, and the El Burrito Loco, which is now Jaguar. We continue the program on a smaller scale and have worked with Four Sisters Holistic Remedies and hope to soon work with the new owners of the Dobson Law Building. We've organized a number of forums and workshops for businesses with training on storefronts, merchandising, and retail trends. And we've partnered with the Eastside Communities and the Startup 425 Partnership to deliver trainings downtown, including support for women entrepreneurs and Hispanic business owners. We have greatly increased and enhanced our business outreach efforts through our websites, including RentonDowntown.com, and have invested in growing our social media presence. We've recently created videos with our marketing campaign partners that prominently feature downtown businesses. In addition, we have filmed over a dozen small business highlight videos that we've called the Renton Business Minute. And as recommended in the plan, we have contracted with a specialty retail brokerage firm to help us promote locations to business prospects. The plan called for us to update our development policies to encourage future growth and become more business-friendly. We've done so to allow food trucks throughout the area, keep storefronts open and inviting, and encourage taller buildings. Future efforts will have us working to improve parking operations throughout downtown and encourage creative and quality signage in the area. We will continue to work with the Renton Downtown Partnership on achieving a Main Street designation, and with business and property owners to explore creative tools to sustain its efforts throughout, through a business improvement district or other means. Working together with the Renton Downtown Partnership, the Renton Chamber of Commerce, and our Community Services Department and others, we've seen many new and enhanced events downtown. Some of these include the popular Wine Walk Series, Summer Fest. I'd like to point out that the person on the furthest right with the pie in their face is me. The person on the furthest left with the pie in their face is my daughter. So if you ever need somebody to pitch hit for a pie-eating contest, my family's there for you. The Summer Concert Series, our Old Fashioned Halloween, and the Small Business Saturday and Tree Lighting Event. Capital projects, large and small, are underway downtown. Here you'll see the first parklet installation in front of Boon Boona. The long-awaited wayfinding project is at 90% design and will see, will begin installation this year. This is an example of one of the gateway signs. This is one of the interpretive panels that'll be along the Riverfront Walk. This is a pedestrian kiosk, and this is pedestrian-scale wayfinding. Also, new sidewalks, street trees, lighting, and furniture will be installed on Wells this year as part of the downtown two-way traffic conversion project. Other roads, as they're converted in the two-way project, will be completed during, in phases. Of course, the biggest capital improvement projects underway are being managed by our Public Works Department in the intersection improvement on Wells and Williams at Second and Third Street. These new raised-table intersections will be similar to the one at Second and Main and will provide an enhanced pedestrian experience downtown. On the private investment side, design and entitlement work continues for the waterfront development of 200 mil. The Civic Core Plan envisioned exploring new uses for the Renton Pavilion Building. As you're aware, we issued an RFP last year and received two expressions of interest. While this project is currently on hold, we do foresee this project coming back before council at a future meeting. A major goal of the Civic Core Plan was to connect the South Renton neighborhood to downtown and to the Cedar River, into the Cedar River through an enhanced connection through the Burnett Linear Park. Public Works has secured funding for initial planning, and the city was awarded $500,000 in the state capital budget last year to begin a portion of the new trail. Due to the nature of the Civic Core Plan, several large capital projects have been identified and will be prioritized by council at a later date. Art installations such as murals and pop-up exhibits have become an integral part of our downtown and can be explored using our new mobile application. That concludes the Downtown Update.
Are there any questions, Madam President?
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions?
Madam President?
And Councilmember Benedetti, and then Councilmember O'Halloran. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate seeing that, David. As a member of the original advisory board for this project, I can tell you it's wonderful to see some of these improvements coming. So, given that we have a golden opportunity, and I know that for a very terrible reason, that traffic is greatly reduced on our city streets right now, is there an opportunity now to increase the timeline or speed up a bit the work on that Williams and Wells conversion while it is going to have less of an impact on traffic overall? Thank you.
So the project is tied directly with the intersection improvement projects. So our project, where our project on Wells is, ties directly into where the project, the intersection improvement project ends, so we really have to wait for their project to complete for us to do our project.
Thank you, Councilmember Benedetti. Thank you, Dave. Councilmember O'Halloran?
Thank you, Angie. You asked my question.
Okay. Any more questions from councilmembers? Okay, Dave, thank you very much. Thank you very much as well to Cliff for this presentation. And we will move to the next item on the agenda, which is the Renton Municipal Art Commission Update. I think this is you, Jessie, right?
Yes, that's correct. And I'm happy to be sharing this presentation tonight with the Chair of the Arts Commission. Mary Kleimer is actually going to be talking on the wonderful things the Arts Commission has been doing recently.
Welcome, Jessie. Welcome, Jessie, and welcome, Mary. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I'm really excited to be here tonight. Jessie, are we all set up on your end? Can we go for it?
Can everybody see it? See the presentation?
Yep.
Okay. Awesome. So just want to start by saying thank you for, thank you for allowing me and Jessie to be here to talk about what we've done. Just going to give you kind of a summary, little highlights of what's happening. So we're going to go through accomplishments of 2019, which, in public art, community events, support for the arts, and then what we look forward to doing this year and in the future. So the Arts Commission helps organize, promote, and fund different art programming that creates art and access for all to our community. So starting with some of the biggest events of 2019, which you're all familiar with, the Dragon, Rooftop Dragon or Azmath, would have celebrated his, or did celebrate his first birthday on April 13th of this year. This was, as you all know, a huge endeavor that I think, you know, started at a council presentation, I think it was in 2016, with just an idea that the council really gravitated around, and then Marsha Rollinger really stepped up to the plate to play around and really helped show the city, the commission, and really the Arts Commission what can be done when a bunch of people come together to showcase support for something. So this event last year brought over 1,000 people into our downtown area. There were different businesses, were doing egg hunts and different displays about how this was made to keep this project going. And this, it's because of this project that our Facebook page was increased by 51% in how many people subscribe to the page, which has resulted in us being able to have a increased engagement in community events moving forward. In the very middle here, you'll see the selfie spot, and that's part of what we just spoke about in the previous downtown Civic Core presentation. When they redo Wells, this is going to be a bronze figure, an inlay bronze figure that is designed for where you stand to have the best selfie taken with you in the Dragon in the background. So art in our neighborhoods is also been a huge part of the success of 2019. The hydrant program, I think everybody is familiar with and loves, and this was South Renton's idea. They really executed this, have done a really good job. It's been a really good opportunity for some really seasoned and amateur artists to have an opportunity to show some Renton love in a very unique way. Other things that were done here were the mini murals along Burnett Linear, and these were done by Vikram Adam, and he is an amazing talent. He worked endlessly on this project with the Renton History Museum, really engaging in what the history of the area was, to create these little murals that are on the back of all the signposts in the neighborhood. And then coming soon, we have what is called Market Melody Murals, and that is going to be on that wall. It gets a lot of attention there with graffiti artists, but that runs parallel with the Piazza Park, but in the alley, and it's going to have a different mural aspect. I believe Sybil McIntyre is the artist that was selected like on that one, but I'm blanking right now. So that, yeah, she is? Okay. And so that one's coming soon. Thank you, Jessie. So that'll be coming soon. I'm not really sure what, but I think they're hoping to have it up this summer, correct?
Yeah, the slide that they're all viewing right now was taken today, so she has started painting.
Oh, great. Well, there you go. She started painting today. Excellent. And then Sunset Highlands area, this is an area that has been getting a lot of attention lately, we're really proud to say. Last year, the spring of last year, the Sunset Fence Project went up. This was done with the Arts Commission in conjunction with the Americor Vista. Hannah Bon Miller was the person who rallied and was really our service person on it. The community really rallied around this, and it was really great doing all the events and being personally connected to this project. I have to say, it was such a delight, really getting to know the neighborhood and the people in the neighborhood, and really designing something that spoke for all the different languages and cultures involved. Also in the area, we have the Utility Box Wraps. This is one that was done based off of another community project a couple of years ago, and she is having three more put in soon up on Sunset Boulevard on different corners. This one, she worked with the kids and then was able to do silhouettes of their designs to incorporate a design. And I think, do we have pictures of what is going in next, Jessie, for her, or no?
No, I'll have to wait and find out.
Okay, we'll wait and find out. Sounds good. And then the Sunset Community Park, this is a really great installation that's going to be really in the center of this park, and it is by artist Kirk Sees, and it creates a unique art that really celebrates Renton's connection to our aviation history. And we're working with the artist. He is in upstate New York. He was planning on being here for this project, but in light of current affairs, decided to stay home while we worked through it. We do have a contract with this artist that this will be a sculpture unique to Renton, meaning that he cannot duplicate it for anybody, any other city or community, which is very exciting. And we're happy to announce that Renton Hill will be getting their very first public piece of art on the utility box. You are probably familiar, if you live on Renton Hill, with this one here. This artist, Yvonne Chan, she installed this last fall. And so this was really the first on Renton Hill, but we consider it the base of the hill. But working with PSE, we're looking to get one up on Breaker Box in, up on the hill. We were working with the HOA president. were working with the HOA president, Bob Benedetti, but he is now stepped down. And we're looking to contact Melanie Kroger about getting these art finalized, see what the community is interested in. But these are the different designs that are options for the wrap at this point. So, just waiting to hear from the community on Renton Hill to get that one going. Benson Hill is another big project. This is in conjunction again with AmeriCorps Vista. It's a mural project. It's going to be the second one in the Benson neighborhood. This utility wrap you're seeing now is the first project up there. And the community really rallied around it. And the Benson community actually is a very passionate community. They have a lot to say. It's very diverse. And they don't have a neighborhood association. So, it's really taking some effort to get out there, find out what the people are interested in, what is important. And so, the artist, right now, we're looking to get an artist to do a mural on the large retaining wall. It's on Petztrawski at 117th. This is a wall that gets tagged often. It's huge. It'll be the largest piece of art in the Renton community. Sat in on an interview for an artist today. We have two more this week. Very excited about this project. What you see pictured here is the community was asked what they would like to see. And some different kids did some drawings here, things that what community meant to them up in the area. The Kenny Dell neighborhood has a couple of things going on. The water tower selected design was picked. The community had a real, there's a couple of community members who really had a visual of the water tower and wanted to make sure that the art would be something that was soft on the environment and reflected this surrounding environment and not really stand out. And although this is a beautiful design, and we're really happy to see this come into play, it also is going to play really nicely as a background piece. And then a personal favorite of mine, that is something I have been dedicated to for the last five years, has been Tommy the Turtle and finding him a forever home here in Renton. For those of you who don't know, this is an accidental piece of our Renton Arts collection. It was actually first in the Renton Sears complex in downtown Renton. It was rescued by a citizen. It laid up at the Renton Highlands Library for many years, and then into storage, where there was a lot of discussion of where it would end up. So, now he gets to sit every day and look out on the water at Kenny Dell Beach Park, which we're really excited about. And also, Kenny Dell's new fire station got its first in-only fire hydrant dedicated in honor of the Fire Marshal. So, downtown, downtown has always kind of been the core of all things art. So, we are happy to branch out into the different neighborhoods, but we want to remain true to the art and rustic feel of our downtown. So, the storefronts program is really a beautification project, and that's working with empty storefronts to make sure, to help just kind of make the area vibrant. This is another piece from Vikram. He, this was going to be in conjunction with the Dragon, Rooftop Dragon's one-year anniversary and kind of going along with that theme. He has beautiful work. He just wrote a book called The Hateful of Dragons. So, it played really nicely to get him down there and have him do these decals for the window. And then kind of a side note from that, and in a direct response to what's happening in our environment with COVID-19, I'm the Downtown Renton Storefront Art Walk. And this is where we are working to pair artists with businesses to showcase different artwork in the window, kind of keep our storefronts activated. This is a self-guided tour. You can go down if you're in the area. You can also go to the app, the Visit Renton mobile app, for more information. Everything will be on there. And we already have 20 different artists and businesses paired together. And we're actually looking to do, we have a couple more artists that we're working on pairing with stores right now. And then the final thing going on in downtown art-wise is the Renton Loop. So, this has been a project a long time in the making, and we're really excited about it. This is going to sit at the second-in-main corridor, kind of the entrance into downtown. And it's kind of an homage to the Renton Loop and also showcasing the different aspects of Renton from our culture, from the beginning to now. So, starting with a cool base and then moving up to rustic still to more sleek still aluminum. And then at the top, that blue area is going to actually be an LED light to kind of showcase for aviation and really our blue-collar roots up into our high-tech future. So, public art celebrating Renton history, this is just all the different things we just talked about, like with the loop, going from our cool background all the way up to our aviation and our technological future. Again, the Vikram pieces on the back of the signs really showcase all aspects. There are little history pieces. Right there is the Four Cow Bridge and just different things that really talk about the history of who we are. And what did I miss on there? I saw something else, and now I can't think of it. That's the one. Okay, so this is a beautiful Renton athlete mural. This was such a great response. This was something that the Arts Commission was working with Alexander Cott, who's an amazing artist, young professional, who is looking for a wall. That's our problem right now. We had a wall, we lost it. And the idea is, we talked to a bunch of people via social media of, hey, who do you know who went to Renton schools, who went on to do something really great, really professional in athletics? And we got such a great response. And we reached out to a bunch of different artists. They were all very excited to be a part of it, including we talked to the Duomis tribe, and they're very excited to have Henry Moses represented on this. But we lost our wall. So, anyone on council knows of a wall in need of a nice Renton athlete mural, please reach out to the Arts Commission. Alexander's amazing. We want to really keep this relationship going. And we've already talked to so many different athletes who are super excited about the project. So, put that in your ear. Community events that we did over the last year, Summerfest has been a great partnership with the Downtown Partnership down at the Piazza. The community painting mural was a real fun project led by Mina Merchant of the Owl Project, which was really paint by number that the artists drew out. And then individuals from the community had the opportunity to come and paint a section. And that is down at Carco Theater on the backside facing the river. And it just turned out phenomenally. The hydrants, people, what do you want to see, what's happening, and just different things we do at the wine walks, art show organization, any event that comes downtown, the RMEC really tries to have their foot in being there and providing some sort of opportunity for anybody, artists or not, to show what they can do. So, funding for the arts. This year, we actually moved, we have a really dedicated grants committee, a group of wonderful commissioners, and they work really hard. And this year, we decided to change the way we do grants and make it a rolling option instead of a one-time thing, just so we could be more streamlined and so that we could really help the community fund all projects. And it's really helpful, especially now during something like COVID-19, where artists need funding. They kind of need that support now. We also decided this year that we were going to start doing workshops to help guide people through the grants paperwork, so they can see like what the application looked like, what we're looking for. And we had our first workshop scheduled for mid, late April. And we had 17 people confirmed to come to that for our very first workshop. And unfortunately, we had to cancel it. But we did encourage those people to reach out to us, to still apply, and to let us know what support they need. So, other things that the Arts Commission has helped fund that we're really proud of, Renton River Days, Renton City Comic-Con, the Summerfest, and any performing arts, the instructions like the Evergreen City Ballet, Rain City Rock Camp for Girls, Ascendence Aerial Arts, Key to Change. So, these programs make art and instruction available to our residents. And we are always looking to help get our funding direct into programming that goes straight into the pockets of artists and opportunities that allow our community access to see these programs. So, right now, we're working on a couple of great things. The Chalk Your Walk is going on. And if you haven't been on Instagram to see just in day one what people are already doing for it, Let's Go Chalk RNT, it's amazing. Like, the stuff people are doing is really beautiful. And just to see, I have a lot of family and friends who have kids at home, and they're just dying for something to do. And this is something really great that they've been able to rally around. We're giving weekly prizes and get the word out. And every day, there's going to be different ones. So, Message Monday, Who's Your Superhero, Wellness Wednesday, Throwback Thursday, Fantasy Friday, and then Weekend Warriors. So, every day, they have a different opportunity to get involved. We also have something, a community member came to us with an art idea, Envision a Healthy Future. So, we just got that out. And that is an opportunity for, kind of similar to what the PTA does in the school districts, of giving people an opportunity to use their own form of art expression to connect to the community through public media, or excuse me, social media, and share what their definition is. After everything, again, there's prizes for that. Gina Roscoe, who stepped forward to lead this, is also, the idea was to ask for money for the Arts Commission, that we could support local businesses during this time, while these businesses might be closed, to offer them support as gift certificates and rewards and prizes for what these people are entering in this contest. So, then I guess just in closing, you could reach us on Instagram, on Facebook. We have Jessie at the City, which is, she gets all of our emails and forwards them on to all of us. And the last thing I'd like to say is, you know, I've been on the Arts Commission for five years, and it's been such a great, it's been a great experience. We have a really, really great group of people and community members who come together. And there is three things that have really shaped up the Arts Commission in my mind over the last, over my time on it. And one was Chip Vincent started to come to our meetings and really helped us see a voice of what was needed throughout the city. Two, Jessie Katarski, we all know she's amazing. And she is keyed into what's happening in the city. And she is, she gives us a seat at the table and a voice for us within the city. And we could not be successful without her. And three, all of that happened because of the amazing support, continued support we get from you on council and Mayor Pavoni. And we're just so grateful. And things are going great. And I think, I just feel like we have such an opportunity right now to tell the story of Renton as we develop our past, our present, and our future. And we can't do that without you. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mary. On the contrary, I want to thank you for this outstanding presentation. You are a beloved community leader in Renton, also an amazing artist, and an incredible voice for the Renton Arts Commission. I just want to remind the public that they are volunteers. Our commissioners are volunteers. And all this passion and all this love that you're seeing right now from Mary, we could have never done this with someone like her and everybody that is in that commission. Of course, thank you, Jessie and Chip. You also have done a great job supporting them. And what can I tell you? I don't even know what is my favorite project of all of those, but the sunset. It's incredible, sunset fence. I mean, what you did with that fence is just amazing. And the South Renton neighborhood looks completely different. Thank you for all the great things that you have done. At this moment, I'm going to open the floor for comments and questions. And I see that Councilmember Prince has a question.
Actually, more of a comment. Mary, thank you so much for that presentation. We have come such a long way since you and I sat down in Luther's Table and talked to the Arts Commission. Such a long way. And so, I want to, again, thank you for all your hard work as a volunteer and now the charity Arts Commission, for all that you and the commissioners have done for the arts in Renton. It's really made a difference. It's great having such a thriving and active Arts Commission.
Thank you, Councilmember Prince. Councilmember Benedetti?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Prince got to my first comment, which is that this, really the thanks belongs to you all for all of the incredible work. And I also wanted to thank you for the amount of pivoting you've had to do and really to try and find some incredible ways to engage the community at this time. And that it has been a delight. So, speaking of delights, I love the idea of that selfie spot. And I am wondering, is there any way to make that happen in advance of a brass plate? I mean, even a sticker on the sidewalk could really be something that could energize people to, you know, when they're out doing a socially-distanced walk to take a quick snap. And is there a way to maybe put some of those stickers or, you know, future plaques in other parts of Renton to really engage people? I could see one, for example, somewhere near Tommy the Turtle. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. I do, you know, I think that the selfie spot really came in with conjunction with that they're going to be redoing Wells. So, it just kind of was an opportunity that presented itself to have it put as an inlay while that project happens. I'm sure we could probably, Marcia Rullinger designed that. It's kind of her project. So, I'm sure we could probably talk to her about getting something like a sticker or something in there before. It's a great idea. I also like the, I like the idea of having them everywhere. I think that it's kind of a fun thing. So, potentially, yes. And thank you for your comment on the pivoting. I know everyone is. I do not envy the city right now with everything that's going on. I'm sure questions and concerns left and right, day by day. And we're always looking to connect with the community through engagement. And a lot of that has to do with events that happen over the summer. So, yes, we're going to be creative this summer. And we are open to ideas and ready to help artists in need. So, thank you for saying that.
Thank you, Mary. Now, I have Councilmember McIrving.
Thank you. And I just want to pile on on the selfie spot. That was a great idea. And I want to make sure, obviously, we have a hashtag too, so that if people are taking all these selfies. And I love the idea of having multiple locations, that we have a way that they can kind of feed into the public stream in some way, so that everyone can kind of get to see those.
Thank you, Councilmember McIrving. Councilmember O'Halloran?
Yes, thank you, Mary. And I just wanted to follow up on your request for information about athletes coming out of our Renton School District. And I would encourage you to reach out to Benita Horn and John Houston as part of their virtual history tour of Renton. They do a section on the incredible number of athletes that did come out of Renton School Districts back in the day. So, I would encourage you to reach out to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Halloran. Councilmember Corman?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to also thank Mary for the great presentation and also thank the Arts Commission for the incredible work they've done. It's, I just love it. Anywhere I go, I see more of their impression that they've made on Renton. And I don't know how they continue to find those ideas and that amount of energy. It's, I think, more important than ever than we, that we keep them going. They're some of the best, I always say, they're some of the best return on investment, the small amount that we help extend to that committee, because so much of it's driven by volunteers, volunteers who create the art, volunteers who design the art, the artists. who create the art, volunteers who design the art, the artists. And so thank you, and please, please keep it up. Even though we'll be, we'll be talking about difficult budget times, I think that we need to keep the Arts Commission going full force, and please, Mary, pass along our appreciation to the whole committee. Thanks.
Thank you, Council Member Corman. Council Member Van?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to echo my colleagues. Yes, good seeing you, Mary, and thank you for your work, as well as Jessie and the commission. I'm definitely looking forward to all the great things you'll be doing this year. From our last, I think it was in-person meeting, it was phenomenal. That was such an education that I got from the meeting, and again, thank you for your presentation. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Once again, Mary, I echo all my colleagues. Your passion, your dedication has made a difference in our community. I want to thank you again. And also, I want to tell everybody that also Mary is giving yoga classes online, so you can join her on YouTube. And everything that you do, you do it in such an amazing way, Mary, that we are very, very lucky to have you with us. And especially, I echo the voice that you guys are doing a great job funding, funding actually, and your grant applications, and how hard you work on those, it's very thoughtful. And in this time that is very hard for everybody, I think arts makes a difference, and whatever we can do to support you, you know that you can count on us.
Well, thank you very, thank you, everyone. You guys are wonderful. I appreciate the kind words. It's, we have a meeting tomorrow, so I will pass everything along, but we can't do it without you. So thank you. And you're right, if anything you guys know, anybody who's out there struggling with the arts or has an idea, please pass them along. We're looking to connect. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that incredible presentation, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and I'll see everybody outside. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.